Go into the first public hearing, which would have to do with Nader Enterprises LLC at 2777 South Mill Road.
I make the motion to go into the public hearing regarding Nader Enterprises LLC, 2777 South Mill Road.
First and a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're now in the public hearing portion. I'd like to turn the time over to Corbin, and for the record, your name again?
Sure. Corbin Gordon, I'm here for Nader Enterprises. This should be pretty simple. We came and applied for disconnection here, what was it, probably two or three months ago. Realized after we did that, that Nate held his property in Nader Enterprises LLC not in his own individual name, so we didn't want to get kicked out of district court. We had to appeal it on a simple technicality, so we just reapplied with the appropriate name. It's the identical arguments, we've kind of already been through all of this, so I brought basically some packets just for purposes of the record. You'd already gone through and denied the first one, and so, you know, I'm hoping that there will be a different outcome this time, but may not be, and if not, we're just kind of, this is more of a technicality formality, so that we don't end up with a problem in district court if he chooses to appeal. Does that make sense? So if I can just give you copies of everything here, just for the record.
Yes, please.
Really, the only thing that's changed on this one from what we did before is just, there's the initial cover sheet that explains that we just needed to edit it to Nader Enterprises LLC.
And was it this thick last time?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was.
It's a little thicker, I'm not counting pages, but it's just...
It seems like a dang thick, yeah, no, and so they're all the identical things, yeah. I mean, and we've already, actually, for purposes of the record, I would like to ask that because we did this before, if we could just adopt the arguments that I made. Everything's pretty much set out there, I don't want to bore you with all the same arguments that we've been through before. And so, we'll just ask that the arguments that I made the first time that we applied just be made here, they're identical, all remains unchanged in that. Okay? Any questions at all?
Yeah, curious to know why you think your arguments are boring.
Well, I try to make them, you know, as entertaining as I possibly can. Okay?
So with that being said, any other questions from council to the applicant?
I'm gonna finish your public hearing.
Is that?
Finish the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm just gonna finish up, yeah, I mean, any other comments on the public as well?
Where's everyone at today?
Okay. Good question. And nothing from the council, and nothing from the public, any further comment. Chair will maintain a motion with regards to this public hearing.
Okay, I make the motion that we go out of the public hearing, go back into regular session, and again, I'd like to continue this public hearing, so we have a chance to go through this and look at it again and make sure everything that we talked about first is in.
Okay, we have a motion to reexamine the packet and the closer, which I think would probably be better for you, have us look closer to make sure that it's what you said and what you think it says.
I mean, I have a problem with you.
We have a motion for that, we have a second.
Second.
The motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we have this, and that item, that public hearing will be continued, and so Chair will maintain a motion to go out of that public hearing and go into a new public hearing with regards to Mary Jo Coleman public hearing, which was continued from last month.
So move on.
We have a first?
I have a second.
We have a second. First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
So we have left the previous public hearing, and we are currently in the second public hearing with regards to Coleman public hearing. Is there anybody that would be representing them, or would like to speak on their behalf?
I'm sure on their behalf, just one thing. When I told Mary Jo what happened the last time, the only thing she was concerned about is, she felt like the continuance of the public hearing was kind of nothing more than to buy time, she was concerned about that. She would ask that, you know, that this be the last public hearing, nobody appears to be here to talk about it, so that we can start the process, so she can get a decision and move forward on it.
Okay, I know from our standpoint, we have some people looking, who'll be at Bolton, we have not got our answers back from the really important folks that look at all this stuff, so that particular item still may be looked at from the town's point of view.
And that's fine, her point was, and I think she's probably correct, you have a public comment, and once the public comment is done, then there's a timeframe where you've got like thirty days to respond to those kinds of things, but I don't think you can continue just having a bunch of public hearings to buy time to review it.
And I'd agree, to buy time and to do it not upfront and not to do it right, I would agree with you, but it does take a little extra time to look at all the issues and think that a few times.
Well, that's fine, she just requests that, I mean, basically given that, I mean, the purpose of gathering the public comment is so that you can make your decision based on that, doesn't look like there's any public comment, so time should start, or if you guys can analyze and make a decision.
But a lot of stuff in this packet that you go over though.
Well, right, you've had it for thirty days.
We have, and some other people have also had it, so we're trying to get that all put together. Okay, so we were at, we had enough comment, any other public comment with regards to this public hearing? I'll move to the council, the council like to discuss anything with regards to the Mary Jo Coleman public hearing?
Yes. You got something? I've got a couple, you got something? I've got somebody over there. I've got a lot of phone calls out on a lot of this stuff, and I haven't had them returned, and so I'm still gathering some information. You can see, I've marked up my application, and so I haven't had my questions answered, and I don't know how fast that will come back, and so I do need a little bit more time, and I would like to continue the public hearing, because part of that process was the public questions that we received during the first public hearing, so I would move that we continue it for another month and be able to get those answers.
Okay, so we have a motion to continue this one as well, to get the answers, that we have the full understanding of what we're dealing with. Go to the second. Check, first and a second, going to discussion amongst the members. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would continue it as well here. There's a number four, business license, tender touch massage, looks like a renewal.
So, there's actually a new one on there, and since they are present, we'll need that first.
Sure. I'll pass it around. Outwelt officials' gear and apparel, so who would be the owner there?
Yes, so myself, Mary Ellen.
If you wouldn't mind just cutting out state and name for the record, so she can get the name down and whatever.
My name is...
Okay. It's actually west, out west, my handwriting is terrible, that's probably why it says west.
Mine's worse.
Mine's worse. So this is, I'm a sports official, I referee, I umpire baseball, work college baseball, work some professional baseball, do football, do different sports, not while I'm on crutches, but when I'm out on crutches, and so I've been asked by some colleagues to start an officials apparel business, so basically the referee shirts, you see referees wear, the pants, so it's not a real large crowd, so there's not a lot of inventory, and a lot of it's drop shipped, so we're looking to start this business, we'll just run it out of our home, there are crazy acres, and ship everything from there, it's just starting out small, we'll see if it grows, and if it grows, we'll hopefully someday go to a storefront, you know, somewhere else, but right now, we're just gonna run it out of the basement. We're down to our last child, being home, so we have all this extra space to do something with, and so that's our desire.
Okay, you tell me as far as room and the number of drop offs and the number of shipments, I mean, obviously, the more the better for you, but the impacts is kind of what we're looking at, in and out, and how many, and big trucks and kids in the, you know, in the street, which, some of those things, do you see that, how that might impact that area?
No, I don't know really, I mean, most of the neighbors we have are family, so we don't see a lot of impact there, a lot of little kids around the neighborhood, but most of the shipments will come UPS, will come at the same time. Typically, it's seasonal, so for example, we're gearing up now for the basketball resting season, football's, you know, people, referees have already bought their stuff for football, basically, and so we're gearing up for that, so we'll have some shipments coming in October.
So I take it, you're taking it, selling that ship, boxing it back up and sending it out to Fred and doing your thing?
Correct, yeah.
And we have a horseshoe driveway, so it's in and out access, so it's not an issue.
So we'll have deliveries, but we won't have UPS coming to our house for pickup, you know, shipments, we'll go to the post office or the UPS store, I work down...
Much people, or folks coming to the house, or mostly all shipping online?
No, it's not, none of it's doing, it's all shipping, yeah, it's all shipping.
Any questions from the council?
Have you, by chance, read the tag code on home businesses and stuff?
I have not.
I encourage you to just read that.
That's it.
Make sure you're...
Is it online?
Yep.
What it will help to do is maybe if you have to have some outbuildings or do some things, it's gonna be able to help you understand why there is or isn't a reason why you can or can't do something within your own property and things, and great suggestion.
Yeah, sounds great.
I'm not opposed, I'm about to sign this forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Yeah, hi, oh, sorry. I'm memorizing.
And then you have the sixty dollars for the...
So do you, can you get a card, or do you guys, how does that work, check or cash? Check or cash?
Okay, well...
If I have to reprint that anyway.
Yeah.
Good luck with all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That injury is not a result of a bad call.
Um, no, there's been a lot of bad calls.
Oh.
So she's gonna grab a check and bring that back and see it.
Super awesome.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Looks like we have three renewals here, one would be tender touch massage, you've kind of thought for quite a while, any complaints on anything that you know about these three? Tender touch, it will also be housekeeping by dawn.
By dawn, no.
And the third would be K L T Inc., DVD, Great Escapes.
They run their business right, let me get no complaints.
That would be business license, and I think there's likely any other comments regarding business, Mary, or anybody asking, anything with that? Okay, move on to item number five, which was, is Alan Stonely here or...
Let's skip over that and come back to it if you can.
Okay.
Need a motion?
I do.
Motion to skip over number five, come back, fix that potential.
Your motion, you have a second?
Seconded.
All in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, until the end of the evening, if he shows up. Okay, possible, move on to number six, which would be possible approval of Wasatch County snow removal agreement.
Thank you. So I printed the morning one up, so it's not that long. Oh, okay. So I will just send it out to... That'd be great. Thanks, Mary. Chip, um, that'd be good. Thank you.
The council liked me to restate this, I... Okay. Interlocal act requirements, I'm just gonna read just a slight, interlocal act, but just requirements of this, five of the line items. No interlocal entity is created by this agreement pursuant to U.S. Code, this agreement shall be reviewed by the attorney representing each party prior to state effect pursuant to Code section, this agreement shall be administered by the county fellow works director, Brandon Clark. Yeah, it's kind of the same thing, so if you don't have any questions, I would think we have a motion to sign.
The only thing that I was wondering, it looked like to me that the sign, do you know what they were charging for around signs?
I don't see it, you know, like...
If you look at the bottom of that, it looks like the snow removal is the same, but it looks to me like they possibly can't do sign replacement. I think they, I think it's fifty-six now, do you know what it was for?
Okay, fee, the town hereby agreed to pay the county seventy-four dollars per hour for snow plowing, and you said that within the municipal boundaries of the town and forty-one per cubic yard salt in the county within the municipal boundaries of the town, sign repair and a replacement will be charged at fifty-six dollars per hour plus materials. I actually thought it was seventy-five.
I thought it was fifty.
Okay. But it said fifty-six?
I'm good with that.
Okay, thanks for pointing that out, though, now we know it's at least fifty-six, and that's been corrected. So...
So check there's, you'll need to sign the contract, because then I'm gonna have to obtain from Mike Davis, and then there's also the secondary...
For the...
...you need to sign for the resolution.
The resolution, okay, so we will do the, I'm just gonna sign the agreement now, and then I'll read the resolution and go over that. Note, this would be the resolution that corresponds with the this year's county snow removal, and it would be D.R. twenty eighteen dash oh nine dash oh five, September fifth, twenty fifteen, short title.
Twenty eighteen, sorry.
That's your conference, you're three years behind, September fifth, twenty eighteen. Short titled resolution authorizing interlocal agreement with Wasatch County for snow removal and sign replacement repair, snow, the purpose would be snow removal services to be provided to the town of Daniel by Wasatch County for the winter season twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and sign repair and a replace as needed within Daniel. A resolution whereas chapter thirteen of title eleven of the U.S. Code permits local government units to cooperate with each other for mutual advantages and thereby to provide services in a manner that will accord best with geographic, economic populations and other factors, including the needs and development of local communities for the overall promotion of the general welfare of the state, and whereas the town desires that the county provide snow plowing services for the public records located in the municipal boundaries of the town of Daniel and repair or replace a road sign there, and whereas the county is able and willing to provide snow plowing services as a season by season basis, and whereas the town, the town and the county desire to establish the terms, their cooperation to provide the aforementioned services, the Daniel Town Council does hereby approve that an interlocal agreement be entered into between Wasatch County and town of Daniel for snow removal services for the winter season twenty eighteen, nineteen, and sign repair, sign repair or replace as necessary, and authorize the mayor to negotiate sign and entering such agreement, once signed, such agreement will be attached to this resolution as permanent record. Any discussion, if not, I'll take a motion on the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Your motion, you have a second?
I seconded it.
You have a second, any questions with regards to it? If none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I approve.
Why do you need to sign that? That's the residual resolution.
Okay, and then there's...
I know you initialled it, but down below, you need to sign that.
There you go. That one makes it up here, this one here.
Okay, now I need all that back.
Yep. I'm gonna make sure I sign that.
I'm glad you were married.
Yep. I love to pass things on. Do I owe any... Okay, this would, taking care of item number six, we'll move on to item number seven, which approval of ordinance with regards to the Huntsman Armstrong Reis Home. I'll read the municipal ordinance. Number B O dash twenty eighteen dash oh nine dash oh five A, September fifth, two thousand and eighteen, short title, reason of property at twenty eight seventy-nine South Mill Road, Daniel, Utah, from an RA five to commercial. Purpose, ordinance to change the zoning of property at the address listed above, also known as parcel number zero zero dash zero zero twenty dash forty-four seventy-seven. Currently assessed as approximately three point eight five acres. Ordinance whereas the Daniel Town Council voted at the August eighth, two thousand and eighteen meeting to make the zone change proper notice have, break the zone change, proper notice have been, having been given for a public hearing held on the matter on June twentieth, twenty eighteen, and the town council with the planning commission having heard the public's comments regarding the zone change, be it ordained by the Daniel Town Council of Daniel, Utah, that the zoning of the above described property will be changed to a commercial designation after adoption and publication of this ordinance, the Daniel Town zoning map will be amended to reflect this change. Any questions amongst the council? Chair will maintain a motion.
Motion to accept the ordinance.
You have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I seconded it.
You have a second, any last discussion?
He asked to post for, it says publication, I think it is, a thirty day before or after.
Okay.
Does it sign over?
With that being said, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Mary.
Okay. Pass, one opposed. Any other, move on to number eight, which would be planning department report violations and enforcement. Put him over there.
All right. Here's the planning report for August, things available to crews alone. Need one of those? Sure, why not?
Come on back here.
Why not, huh? How about you, Gal? You need one? You might as well. Any questions on that?
Just the blank web, zone change, or small scale subdivision, they're looking to break up that sixteen acres or so.
Yes, in the back, and then we've had a couple of applicants, or not applicants, a couple of interested parties that have been told there's a fifty foot easement going in there, and as far as we can tell, there's not, so they may not have access back in there. So I believe the home is sold now, there's people moving into the home, which would have been one of their options to get back into there, but I believe that that option's probably not there now, so.
Wow. Yeah, that's a tough piece, isn't it?
It's tough, yeah. We have a bunch of those in Daniel, that those folks are dying, and built in the back, people like to build on, and so far, we've accommodated on what's new road standards and those kinds of things, but we won't be, I mean...
This one's a really hard one, from what I understand.
It'll be tough.
No applications or anything yet, though, or anything?
Nope, and Engineering Services called me, wanted to know where to find the code, they were gonna go look it up and design it themselves, so.
Eric, will you remind me what the footage is, on the frontage?
On the frontage?
Yeah.
You have to buy a road built to the town of Daniel standard for one hundred feet.
And that's, and that's where we had that other, we worked on for a while, that we let a road mill, but then we had that secondary standard, but that would still be a hundred feet?
It's still a hundred feet, yeah, that doesn't change, that's just the road standard, the fifty foot right away with, with the road, road mill, up to three homes.
And then they have to go to a full road?
Full road, yeah, has to be asphalt after three, it's up to three, is what we adopted. And then, of course, we had the complaints on dust and noise, and so the dust has continued, I think there's a couple here tonight to speak about that. You guys here for dust? Yes?
That was as good a time as any.
As long as we can hear you, that... Okay. We're just wondering if, okay, Brown, Mr. Brown, I don't know his first name, he lives down by three thousand south, and he has been hauling man dirt, and many, many loads of dirt, and I was informed by Mr. Jensen that he talked to him, and he said that he is going to screen that, and he is going to put it all over his property, and that the back piece has been changed to commercial, and that he was able to get that, is that true?
No. Had heard that one, so I...
Well, these are my concerns, because he's still, and the dirt and the dust, whenever the wind blows, it comes up to my house, and it hits everybody on three thousand, you know that, and as it has been on news all this week, with EPA, they've stated with the smoke and stuff, well, the dust and dirt is just as bad, and I don't know if he's allowed to put the screener in, if he's allowed to put the screener in, how many more screners are gonna be put in? Yeah. And, I mean, I will say Coleman's, kudos to them, they got rid of the dirt, and the truck loads of dirt, because that was a big pain in the butt.
I understood that that guy is done, I mean, we're not, that the person that was going in now, they're, they're not, they're taking it somewhere else now.
Oh, the weathers, guy didn't want to help him water that down, so he pulled out.
Well, hopefully your closet, hopefully your clothes are a little wider now.
Yeah, are, 'cause I have some tonight.
Okay.
So if he was temporarily gonna screen in there, it would be allowed for his landscaping, but he wouldn't be able to set up a permanent screening operation.
And he's not able to sell the dirt?
I don't, I don't know that we have any ordinance against selling dirt off your property, but again, that wouldn't be, if you're doing that as a commercial operation, I mean, if you just wanna sell a few loads of dirt you got leftover after you build your house, I don't think the town has any ordinance that would stop that, but if you set up a commercial operation, we do have our ordinances against that. So, and I know he's in the middle of landscaping his property, so I, that's what I thought he was doing with that dirt, was screening it and using it for top line around his new house that he just built last year.
Well, that's why I'm here, I'm just wondering, I mean, you know, you figure people build homes and they landscape, and then it's done?
Yeah.
And then you think of thoughts, but when it's not ever done, you can sort it just a little bit.
Yeah.
I just wondered if, if we're going to have to put up the dirt for a little time?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what status he's at, I was down there at Blue Station this week, and I didn't even look over there to see how far along he's gone, but I know he's, I know he had a lot of dirt left over from his house that he had in there. I'll check into that and see what, see what's going on over there.
So is it, you know what? So is it, you know, more people allowed to bring the screener in?
Well, they have a small screener you can rent over here at the prices. And it's just a small screen, it's six feet wide and any homeowner could get that and screen their dirt on their property.
So Mr. Walt, that's brought in twenty-two loads of dirt, dump truck loads of dirt, can do it too?
Well, I don't know what he's doing with that, so obviously that didn't get incurred on site.
No.
So, but he's not screening that, is he?
No, yep, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't... I'm not thinking... I don't think he's in the screening of that dirt. I don't know if he's bringing up the back down where the canal runs through that property or I don't know what he's doing with that dirt, but to bring it in and dump dirt, we don't have an ordinance against dumping dirt on your property, but...
But I thought you had an ordinance against him bringing in the dump trucks and across the...
Running a business out of his home, out of his home, but they're just parked. So we don't see those going in and out every day.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah. No, I'm just asking.
Yeah. So there's an ordinance against it if he's running a business out of there. But if he's just parking stuff on their property, then that's what we was looking at with the new ordinance, about how many you can have on your property. And everybody's got a few tractors and there's a lot of people in Daniel that... That's the value, having the ability to park when you put it on their property. So that's one of the values we have. But to run the business out and then start incurring what we call impacts on the neighbors, that's when we get involved. To the impact of the neighborhood is what... That's what sends us out to make connection with them. Try and get those impacts down so we can have clean laundry.
Yes, in there, 'cause I find my laundry for forty years.
And that is quite a bright blue shirt you have on there, too.
Yeah, it didn't hang on the line for a few days.
Awesome, so... So we'll keep looking at that. If you see something that ought to be a red flag, it's less known.
No, it's... I mean, even Hickon, they stopped quite a lot of that.
He was at the meeting here the other night, did you notice that? He was here at the meeting the other night, I think he was...
What?
I think he was aware that there is an impact offsite that he wasn't aware of.
And with that petition, what kind of goals did that... Did that petition presented to the council of acts? And so that's just going in with regards to this subject matter, does it bolster the petition? Or is that something that... Were there signatures?
Well, the signatures are there. The one, I could actually make heads or tails of. The other one, I can't even make out a signature on it. They didn't print their name to the side. But then when I reviewed the petitions, they're two different petitions, so they were worded different. So there's a couple of different things on there. But I know they separated them because ones was residents of Daniel and the other one... Or the town, I should say. And the other ones were residents of the Daniel area. So there was actually Heber City residents who were signing that petition of that impact that was going beyond our town limits.
From Heber City residents into our town in their own... And from asking to Heber City in their own...
Yeah.
Multiple.
Yeah, and I don't know if there was somebody in Heber City at the same time or not. I don't know.
But we were told to...
Separated?
No, we were told to take petitions like that. And then if Heber City, if the people from that residential area reported to Daniels, you would report to Wasatch County that there's a pain, there's a problem. Because there, half of those guys are still in...
In the county?
In the county.
Yeah. Couple of those are. We're trying to fix that, but we're meeting strong resistance without filling that hole in.
So that's why there were the three different ones.
I asked you, Marshall, about that rock place down there. Hickons, I guess it is. Oh, that's what we were just talking about.
Yeah, the Hickon.
Are they gonna be allowed to grind that like they did last year?
They have, yeah. They have a permit that allows them if the wind is under so many miles per hour and they wet it down. So they're trying to control their offsite impacts. The county has given them some criteria and they are allowed to grind if they meet those criteria. So the county did give them a permit to grind.
Oh, okay.
Before, they were hauling that out to their quarries overburdened, but then they had the opportunity to grind that. But they did give them a conditional use to grind if they met their conditions. I did not see that document, so I don't know what those conditions are.
Well, they ground that thing last year, 'cause we got dust coming out.
Clearly not following their conditions.
So if they do grind and it's two hundred feet in the air, then we take pictures for what?
Yes, absolutely, you call the county.
Or you can call the EPA as well, because that's what Mr. Walt wanted to do. Just because it was coming over and covered in dust. And the people need it.
Yeah, absolutely, make the calls, absolutely. We make the call here, but it helps when the citizens are calling the county, too. Well, they... I mean, the health department has to respond to those complaints, so... They're more likely to respond to you than they are to the town. They're reluctant to respond to the town.
It's funny how that works, but that's very true.
Maybe they're marked scared of the citizens.
Yes.
If you can get a photo, though, that's great. That's really good.
For three or four or five or six?
Charlie Luke's little granddaughter helps me out a lot. She takes wonderful pictures.
Oh, no photographer, huh?
Yes.
Right on.
And we thank you for coming to these meetings and letting us know of these issues and appreciate your efforts.
I appreciate that. You guys are doing something about it. 'Cause my swearing ability, it gets really bad.
It is on the radar. Not a swearing guy, the issue.
No.
That's on the radar, too.
One real quick one, general plan review, excuse me, campers. What happened to them? Is that a camper or campers?
Camping. Oh, well, we had a request for a lot to be purchased in Stormhaven. And they requested to put a camper on there when they built their house, which our code will not allow anything longer than a twenty day camp stay limit in a calendar year. So that was one of the... Like the state complaints and one of the questions they've asked. I gave them great news. Here's our code, it's not what you wanna do.
We can think about it. Any other questions for Eric with regards to land department?
Again, the bottom one there is the general plan and the land use review is being... Is under review at the planning commission. It will come to you guys if we make a change on there, recommend a change. It'll come to you and we'll have the public hearing and go through that process. If there's no changes, then we'll just adopt it again and move it through.
Was that initiated or was it due?
This is by law, we have to do that every five years.
It was a fifth year?
Initiated by law.
Um, is that a process that you feel would be a month or two? Does it go through the planning?
Yeah, well, we had it on last month, we didn't have anybody write in. I forwarded an email to everybody that one of the planning commissioners responded. It's, I mean...
Like you would like to?
Yeah. It's well written. It's just if we go a different direction as a town, then we'd have to look at that document. 'Cause we pretty much zeroed that document into what everybody wanted. And so if that changes, then that document will change. Our recommendation will come from planning before any change, but that's the way the law's set up, it has to be recommended.
Just one other note. Are you... Do we know anything about the status of the well checked out home?
No.
Okay, so it supposedly has been sold. And the people who own it are not living in it, but renting it out. And so...
Those berries and...
Well, this is the heptel.
Oh, okay, okay.
The heptel. And so I just let those that made the complaint know that we have a signed written complaint and to take pictures and try to document it and then...
Do they act like they would or are interested in doing that to help?
Yes, yes. But again, it was brought up that probably the people who are doing it don't know the rules. And I just wonder if there's any way that we can let people know that they should read code before, you know, before they start doing stuff.
I've thought of that, 'cause it's sort of a... Something I'm interested in and whether you put it on the front headlight with flashing. I mean, Eric can do some pretty good stuff with our webpage, but I, you know, no nightly rental, other than having the code, I don't know what else to do.
I don't either.
The state's really not backing us, but we do have a solution. It takes folks to do what you ask them to do.
Okay, so just a heads up.
Good deal, I didn't know that, that was going on. So there are two on the radar, then?
Yeah.
Two we've had rumors of.
Do you know if there's any residents that talked to you that talked to me with regards to the other one?
Uh, this... These were right close neighbors. I certainly tell you after, but they haven't signed a formal complaint yet.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it for the planning.
Okay. Care of eight, Daniel municipal water issues is necessary.
I thought Gary was gonna be here.
I thought Gary was gonna be here. Kim did ask to be excused, he had another commitment to be here.
Gary was at his mother's when I come to.
There he was.
He was on the lawn, I wonder if he forgot.
Could've been.
I hope I live long enough to forget.
Is anyone here aware of any municipal water issues?
Just this.
Okay, and I've got a letter that also addresses... Maybe you wanna give that letter to Eric, he probably hasn't seen a mail yesterday.
So... We talked about sending out that report. It got sent out late, apparently the state didn't receive it. Tied to that report is the... Is the other report that tells us... Tells them how we sent that out to all of our customers, which has been sent out, we just haven't done the letter. Thereby, in by October, if we don't tell them out, we incur another ten points. But in that report, every point we would staff, we have against the water system is for a late or a missed test. It's not any... It's nothing to do... On that report, there's not one physical thing in our water.
Actual water.
Right. It's all in administrative.
So does that mean we... What does that mean?
What that means is if you keep reading down there, that last line, the EPA, they will come and find us.
Does this mean we need to get a water person to maybe watch over this? Does a council member need to be the water person type of person? Do... I don't know.
So this all has to do with testing, correct, and reporting?
Yes.
And so we have another letter that just gave us a pat on the back with regards to water protection of our water source. So state, on one end, I just got a letter Friday saying that we qualified, we did the proper...
Source protection.
Source protection and they signed off on that. So that is good news. This is not just a... Obviously, we need to fix this within thirty days. I think the water secretary would have nothing to do with this.
Absolutely, I think the water secretary would have something to do with it.
Well, I was talking about the testing part, not the reporting part.
Even the testing, I believe, that they... That's why that list was so inclusive of those things that I wrote, written into that requirement. They should be following this testing schedule, they should be making sure those tests are done. Again, it's up to your water guy to make sure, their water person, to make sure that those things are done, but the secretary should be doing a lot of those...
Yeah.
A lot of those things that currently aren't being done.
Is that because they're not trained, do you think?
Probably, and for lack of accountability.
Well, and what's been happening the last three months might... That would be forward this all change, so this...
Right.
Didn't help... The change didn't help the timing on some of this stuff?
No, no, it didn't. But they're only gonna do what they're asked to do, so.
Yeah.
Very seldom do you find somebody will go out and find what they need to do.
So is this partly Ryan, once again, as far as being gone, didn't get that reporting on time? Because...
Well, there were several. There in the other report that went out, the consumer confidence report, there was, I think, seven of them.
Well, he came by, you know, and I had a look and there was one I had to sign and we talked about the, like, when I'm in, you know, yes, we're late, but you know, I'm not taken care of, but it does look like that part due for...
Yeah, yeah, then he told me the same, that it was...
Thanks.
It gets sent to this... And I believe that it did get, the confidence report did get sent to the state. However, it didn't have the letter, the certification letter with it. So we missed half of... Yeah, you got the letter, but we didn't send the entire thing. So they've deemed us ten points, gonna deem us another ten points. The reason I bring this up is because my license is on the line. That's what's tied to this water system.
Can we solve it?
Well, I think that's what we gotta do. But I want you guys to be aware of that, as we're looking at these new secretaries. We need to get this thing straightened out. And that's what... You know, Shelley talked about that. Somebody should be responsible. You as a council are responsible. I'm more on the hook than you are with my license, but tied to the water system. But Kim went and got her license, but of course she's moved on, so that's not part of our system again. So I need you to be aware of that as we go through those. We need somebody on the ball that's gonna take care of those things that need to be taken care of. There's no reason that we're getting points on administrative things. That's just falling through the...
Yeah, and especially month after month.
Right, and year after year, this is two thousand seventeen. We're almost done with eighteen. I don't know what's happened in this year, 'cause they haven't compiled that before. But we should be aware of that. This council's on the hook for that water system as well as... I'm just more on the hook for it.
So when we say the water secretary, who do we need?
Whoever we're gonna hire.
We have eleven applicants that applied to that ad. We did talk about probably the closed session, we've got eleven applicants that we might have to ask detailed questions at first, but I don't know.
I imagine we'll take those... The way I see it going, we'll take those eleven applications, we'll go through them and narrow it down to three or four and then have them interviews. See what's... I mean, we gotta do something, we can't continue this.
Yeah.
The first thing that's gonna happen is the EPA's gonna show up and they're gonna slam us with five, six thousand dollar fine.
Yeah.
That's a lot of thirty-five dollar a month.
So does the council hire this person or does planning hire this person or...
The council.
So when do we wanna look at those? Should we make that an agenda item or something?
Absolutely, the sooner the better.
Yeah, and it actually shows up tonight, I had Mary put that on you, but... Water secretary under reporter office, because I didn't know if she wanted to go into closed session to discuss. You're certainly talking about the character of person, which is definitely a qualification to be in closed session. So that's why it shows up at the back. But this is part of the planning report, I mean, the water thing, it's just gotta be fixed.
Well, I think the secretary would certainly make sure it all happened. I guess my link for me is we still have the tester to test it on time properly.
So who's licensed to do it now?
To what?
'Cause Kim's gone to go do the testing.
Kim wasn't licensed to test.
Well, I thought she did get licensed.
She got licenses distribution for our water system.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
The water, it takes a... So do you have to...
There's not a requirement. There is a license you can get to be a tester, but it's not required. So on the bigger systems, you will have to be required to have that. But as a small system that we are, you're not required to have that. But there should be somebody trained and knowledgeable, 'cause one thing across the bottom, you got a bad sample, now that triggers source protection monitoring. So you have to go to the source, pull your samples, get them to the thing. If they comes back, then that's when you go boil order, you have to notify the state. And that's where you can really start incurring fines. We've had a couple of bad samples, but we've been able to correct those quick enough that...
Yeah.
That it hasn't become an issue. I think it's just been operator error.
So at this point, who... How do we get that person that can do those tests? Have that person and pass it on to the secretary?
I think that's up to your water manager. He's running that department and I think that you have to bring that on board with the water manager. That's something... That's something that the council will have to require with the water manager, I mean, I can't see us keep doing that.
No, I'll, I'll make a phone call to Gary and talk and then have him come here and, uh, for next meeting and. We can have that as an agenda item, we, we definitely need to solve this and we gotta start to begin next month as soon as we can. Any more sooner or later as far as having it on the agenda or dealing with it?
Can I make a comment? I've been helping, since Kathy Jo said that she was gonna resign, I've been going up and helping and learning the thing. And I see, just standing back and kind of seeing how things are going, I think the hard part is, is like Eric says, you have to get your water manager on, on with you guys, with the secretary and that. But Kathy seems, it seems to be broken up and I don't really know how, because Kathy's doing one thing and then Sherri's doing other things, and so when you're trying to get them together, the wa, the sec, water secretary's job is kind of split, you know? 'Cause Sherri's doing some things with the water company and Kathy's doing some, um, mainly the billings and taking the calls and things like that. So I don't know, and so when you ask them, like Eric said, there's no accountability, it's, well, I thought you was doing, no, I thought you was doing that, so you know what I mean? And then the water manager's saying, I don't care if it gets done, you know what I mean? And so I, but watching that, but this last, since I've been helping her, I, I've called her and I, I say, you know, Kathy, uh, this test is ready to be done, you know, would you, do you call Kim, do you call, uh, GDA, it's time to have it sent in? And she's like, no, I don't do that, and I'm like, you know? And so, you know, 'cause I have the paper showing the schedule of when the days are, what needs to be done, when they need to be called, so. I was just trying to give her helpful hints, so let them, you know, give them a week notice, this is time, it's time to get this stuff done. And, you know, and so I think it's just a lot of, she's done a great job and she's done what she has been told to do. But I think that's your big problem, is you've got two people that are, one's here and one's here, and then you don't have the water man who really knows he's just doing what he's been told years ago and he's not. I, I, like Eric had said, I wasn't trying a while ago to make comments that these guys aren't qualified, I was just saying, y, if they're gonna run the company, the business, that's great, but you have to have somebody over them that knows all these rules, that, and, and dates that to say, oh, you, are you following this, instead of, this is how we've been doing it for years, and you know what I mean?
So Kathy Jo called me today and she's, she's got the next month, you probably talked to her maybe after I, she called you.
I, I haven't talked to her, I'm going up tomorrow to do all the.
The next month?
Yeah.
Yep, and, and so, uh, I would think there would be a point that we'll talk, 'cause these are great, I mean, I I know those exactly, kind of understand what you're trying to say and we're not there and we could be there, it's not very hard things, it just.
Yeah, and maybe, like I said, your new secretary, maybe you can get that, you know, I think, you know, I know everybody just went crazy on seeing the list of what, like Eric said, he got that right off the water. This is what the water secretaries are supposed to be doing, you know, and so when they, when everybody saw that list, they were like, what are you talking about? No, 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 and Sherri said, well, I'm doing these, and Kathy's like, well, I'm doing this, and it's like, it's supposed to be, you know, and the one person, and, and this is a big, I think it's bigger than we think. You know what I mean, but.
We're, we're in the transition and we don't know what the, these thoughts, if you can write them down, 'cause that'd be, be great to come up when we.
Yeah.
So will you specify what you want, an agenda item?
Um, I would think, uh, I don't think we're worrying that we'd use for it, you wanna keep it open in Townesville, we've got eleven applicants and we're gonna keep coming in.
Yeah, maybe everybody we got isn't gonna be, work out, we don't know.
Oh, definitely, the, probably one, one's only probably gonna work out, not one, two or three.
Yeah, so I, I think we should leave it open till filled. I think if somebody else puts in their application, we should accept it.
Okay.
I don't know how far in the process before, I can see what you're saying.
Well, we're gonna stop and have to disseminate which folks.
Right, you get down to three and maybe those three aren't them, maybe you're still in the market, I don't know.
And so to try to clarify with Mary, and I, I just can't crack either word, does agenda item, uh, discussion, uh?
I think, I think, well.
Well, we need to go with the duties, we need to get that, that probably combined, so that might be worth just discussing that a little bit.
Well, I, I think that the duties that we ran in the ad is pretty.
But some, I don't even know if they're gonna pay all of the duties.
I'm sure they don't, I'm sure they don't.
So back to Mary's question.
So, um, water company compliance would be.
Great.
The agenda item, I would think.
So, so in that agenda item, I'm, I'm wondering if it's almost a meeting between the mayor and the water.
Should probably be Gary.
Director, whatever we call him, and say, hey, here's a problem, we need to address this and.
I agree, that's my, my, I, I've talked to him sort of before, but I haven't been blunt, but we've never had these kind of issues and we can't have these issues continue.
Yeah, yeah, I think. Might end up in closed session anyway. Yeah, I, I just, to make you aware of what's going on there, I, again, because I got involved with that, I, I got handed a report and got asked what to do with that and I'm like, oh, crap, we're late, so.
Is this stuff, is it?
Probably crossed the line, but I've been known to do that.
I take it we're underway on compliance?
Yeah, I believe that we are definitely working towards compliance, um, I have the lady's, uh, name that that was turned into. Rachel Cassidy, that this, that's written this letter is, she used to be all with the compliance and now she's moved off the chain, so there's another lady that we're working with there, but. The transition between, uh, GDA and, I think there was just a bunch of factors that come into that, but it's been going on for.
Well, it has, and we've talked about at least three months in a row.
Yeah. And so I guess, I guess that may be a bigger question is, is, is.
One minute.
Yeah. It might be. And maybe, and maybe what we're looking at as a secretary, I mean, the wages are what, five thirty-five to these seconds? Maybe the wages are too low to get somebody to do what we're asking.
Must not be too, you got eleven applicants.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if you drop off everything that was supposed to, that you'd ask.
Yeah, we, again, they don't know what their duties are.
So you're thinking that people that are applying, the ad isn't too descriptive on what they're applying for?
Well, I think the first one was more descriptive, but there was some kickback about how long that was.
I've been hearing all that they're getting told is that all they have to do is send out the bills, do the media, you know?
About noting the bill?
Yeah, just what Kathy's been doing, and that's all their job is, well, for five and a half dollars, you know, and you could do that, that's not a bill.
Which she would tell them, if you call Kathy, don't ask her what her duties are, that's what her duties are, so. There may be some surprises what.
But you add all that other stuff and it might be, oh, wow, this is more than I bargained for.
Yeah, I'm sure I have a few secretaries that have said that about me.
I would think the, the, the reality is somewhere in between, if not, if.
So, okay. So if, yeah, if you talk to Gary, I guess we'll just see how that goes on, so we won't need that as an agenda item.
So you don't want the water compliance listed then?
Doesn't sound, sounds like she's gonna hand that over.
I'll talk to Gary and it still may, I'll tell you if it comes up again with Gary, if you have to come to closed session or Gary just gives me, uh, some kind of message or.
I'll, I'll report back with regards to that.
And number ten, Stormhaven Water Matters, um, you and Gary came up with that as well, do you have any kind of storm water, or do you, Stormhaven water issues that you guys might know about?
Nope. We're doing awesome, we got some money set aside.
And work will begin one of these weeks, hopefully.
Yes, they keep moving up the money, so. Other people are falling behind.
Okay, well, item number eleven, approval of council meeting minutes, uh, for June fourth, two thousand and eighteen, everybody gets to read that. So, general plan motion for minutes.